Mayor Patterson, yes, we have quorum.
Okay, first up, we have Committee of the Whole closed meeting.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Holland. The council resolved itself into the Committee of the Whole closed meeting to consider the following item: A position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board, nonprofit affordable housing in Kingston.
Please vote. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering, that us bring our good minds and hearts together as one, to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. Okay, we were just meeting in Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We discussed one item with respect to nonprofit affordable housing in Kingston, and so I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Bohm. The council rise from the Committee of the Whole closed meeting without reporting.
And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the addits. We have an addition of a delegation, a motion of condolence, an information report, a miscellaneous business item, and some communications. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Ossanik. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counsel Cannon.
Thank you, and through you, I, Adam Cannon Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report Number 45, Clause 3, as my spouse works at Homebase Housing.
Counsel Bohm.
Thank you, and through you, I, Ransfield Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 9, Para 3, Report Number 45, as an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that of a conflict in this matter.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other declarations of pecuniary interest, we will move on. So, we have no presentations this evening, but we do have one delegation. Paul Martin will appear before council to speak to Clause 5, Report 45, received from the CAO, with respect to delegated authority for property acquisition, Third Crossing. And just a reminder to our delegations that you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, members of council, Kingstonians. My name is Paul Martin. On Friday, April the 27th, at 9:00 a.m., I received an email with regard to this council meeting. Unfortunately for me, I opened it up at 3:00. And on this Tuesday night, it's before council to look at expropriating lands from people that are involved with the Third Crossing, which totally surprised me, and how quickly that this had all of a sudden come to council. Back in February, I was phoned as soon as the federal announcement was made for funding, but until now, no meeting, no information was given, other than I was contacted to say that they would like to meet with me very shortly. At this point, I do not understand or know how I'm going to be affected. I have seen draft reports, but nothing finalized. I own a property at 919 Montreal Street. That particular property has three entrances. I'm not sure whether they're affected or not affected, or how the land's affected. So, I'd like to begin by letting everyone know, I am not against the Third Crossing. I'm for it. I think it's a very positive thing, and it's not my intent to interfere with its progress. However, I do feel it's very important that the affected landowners and businesses have an opportunity to receive meaningful and up-to-date information about the full impact of the development on their properties and their businesses. Although it can be argued, public meetings have already been held, the information presented was again in a draft format. This particular property of mine accepts tractor trailers and five-ton trucks, as well as school buses, that use the site as a safe spot for transferring children on and off the buses. And again, it is unclear to me how this is going to affect this particular property. My experience with the city in dealing with expropriation, because what they're asking is they're asking that you begin to negotiate with us, but do it in tandem with expropriation. And my experience with expropriation with the city has been unfair and not in good faith. And when I see this being proposed right away and immediately, I say to myself, why? If they're going to try to treat us fairly, why would you want to do it in tandem immediately? Why wouldn't you want to sit down with all of the people affected, the businesses? And I guess I also try to understand, has a business analysis been done on how you're going to affect that area with regard to the businesses and the people that live and work in that area? If it has been, I would really appreciate you sharing. So, I'm asking for a public meeting. I'm asking for fair negotiations, and I would really value and appreciate two members of council being on the committee. Staff has done it in the past, and when I ask, does staff, or does council, do they think that's fair? Their comment to me is, they make the final decision.
Thirty seconds.
And the decisions, when I ask whether you've had an opportunity to understand the effect, has been, no, we didn't realize that. The information wasn't communicated properly. And I think it's very important that council, as you're making those decisions, and how they affect the businesses and the people that are in these areas, how they're affected, you need to know. Because in my experience, it wasn't related.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counsel Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship, and Mr. Martin, for bringing your concerns forward. When you were mentioning a public meeting, that there should be a public meeting, what specific information would you want, you know, for the public meeting to go over?
Sure. To see what the traffic patterns are going to be, how our properties are going to be affected, where the roadways are going, where the traffic counts are going, where the streetlights are going to be. There's been none of that done to at least the best of my ability as of yet, and those are things that are going to adversely affect all of us in that area. And I think it's really important, not to mention a bit of a business study done, on how they're going to affect the businesses in that area.
Thank you.
Okay, Clarence.
Thank you. Given that you have some experience having been expropriated in the past with the city, could you, in addition to the public meeting, let us know what you think we should be doing in addition to the public meeting to make it a fair process, based on your past experience?
The city has a process where they'll go out and they'll do a market assessment. And that market assessment usually does not compensate, in my experience with 1551 John Counter Boulevard, where the city expropriated last year from me, ended up in a scenario where the businesses that I had in there were eliminated, except for one still in existence. I ended up with no property, no building, and I ended up with a little bit of cash in my hand, which I couldn't purchase what I had. And I think it is really important that this council see and understand the effect that they're not having, not just only on the landowner, but also on the businesses that are associated with that landowner. And I know in this particular case of the Third Crossing, you're also taking some land from private homeowners. And if you give them, let's say, $300,000 or $400,000, the average house anymore is that, if not more. And you'd find it very stressful trying to find something else to accommodate what they've lost. And I guess what I'd like to see done is, let's find something that's appropriate and say, if you're happy with this, here, we'll give you this, instead of giving you cash. Because cash, it's taxed, and you generally can't go out and replace what you had.
Counsel Cannon.
Thank you. Is there a way for us to vote to move forward with this in such a way that we can satisfy your concerns? In other words, kind of killing two birds with one stone, or moving forward and accomplishing both tasks, I guess I'd say? Where you, we can, we can treat you fairly and equitably, in a transparent manner, with the course that we're potentially going to take?
I guess what I'd like to see is having at least a minimum of two counselors on the negotiating committee. And I know we each get dealt with separately, and that's fine, but I want to make sure council is informed and knows what the process is. Because my past experience has been, is they were not informed properly. They didn't understand the process. And, you know, I need some assurance, I guess, that I'm going to be dealt fairly this time around, because I wasn't last time. And I, I see the expropriation as like you're putting a gun to one's head almost, and I can't, I've got no negotiation. It becomes, once you begin to expropriate, it's really confiscation, is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we will move on. We have no further delegations tonight, but we do have one briefing. Gerard Hunt, CAO, will provide introductory remarks and introduce David Fell, Chief Executive Officer, the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, who will provide a briefing to council with respect to Clause 2, Report Number 46, from the CAO, with respect to the Eastern Ontario Cell Gap and Capacity Expansion Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, members of the public. Just like to take a few minutes to introduce David Fell, Chief Executive Officer of the Eastern Ontario Regional Network. Eastern Ontario Regional Network, as you know, was responsible for introducing and beginning in about 2013, the regional broadband initiative, which brought broadband throughout all of eastern Ontario. And the city of Kingston participated in that because we had no broadband in the rural area, and we were able to piggyback on that particular investment. And in fact, out of that, we even were able to work with Utilities Kingston to get a contract to introduce additional fiber in our business parks. So it was a great partnership. Council, in this term, your council, set a goal of a smart city. Part of that goal was to enhance our fiber connectivity, and the key word on that is connectivity. What is before you tonight is the ability to enhance connectivity. We all know that there are sections in this city that you can drop calls, basically because there is interference with the cell signals, and those calls are not conducive with good connectivity and/or economic development opportunities. In addition, the more carriers that are on, on, on the system, I'm sorry, the more, the more users that are on the system, means that if we don't expand that system, we won't be able to have sufficient capability to be able to have more people using the system. It won't set us up for the future, and it won't achieve some of your smart city objectives. So with that, we're pleased to be able to recommend, without an impact in tax dollars, a four-year allocation to a project that Mr. Fell will speak to you about. And I look forward to answering questions at that time when the report comes up, should you have any, but turn it over to Mr. Fell at the moment.
Thank you very much for that great introduction, Gerard. Worship, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd just like to take a moment to introduce my colleagues. Kelly Pender is a CAO from County of Frontenac nearby. Lisa Severson's our stakeholder communications officer. And Jim Pine is the CAO for Hastings County, and also a co-lead on the project, and they've been instrumental in helping us get here to this point today. And thanks for the great introduction, Gerard. Your technical background has really grown in leaps and bounds. I was going to let you do the whole presentation tonight. So we wanted to give you a very brief update on background on the original project, as Gerard talked a little bit about, but really concentrate on the motion that's before you tonight, and try to provide some, some context for that. So this is our first project. It started in 2010, it was completed in 2015. We were able to invest $175 million in public and private funding. We were able to put fiber into business parks in partnership with Kingston Utilities and other companies, and over 5,500 kilometers of new gigabit Ethernet fiber. So that surrounded the region, and we've had 150,000 new subscribers in eastern Ontario able to get high-speed broadband. As we wrap that project up, though, we heard from a number of MPs and MPPs that they were concerned about mobile coverage, about cell coverage in eastern Ontario. So we were starting to get a lot of calls, Lisa was taking a lot of those calls, and we started to do some research on the project. I just wanted to give you a sense, Gerard alluded to this, your investment in the first project was $440,000. You got a direct investment in cash of $1.8 million, as well as $727,000 into the business parks through Kingston Utilities. So that gives you a bit of a sense. We try to talk to all of our municipal partners about the kind of return that they might get from their investment on these projects, and we're looking for the same kind of return the next time around. Since the end of 2015, I also want to mention that we've had over $100 million in private sector investment into broadband in eastern Ontario. And that's in projects like the Fiber to the Home project from Bell in Kingston, and in Peterborough, that was around $75 million of investment. So these projects helped us to stimulate and trigger new investments going forward. But tonight, we're here specifically to talk about mobile broadband, and we're very pleased the Wardens Caucus that my colleagues represent are the 13 counties of eastern Ontario, and every year, they identify a priority for economic development. And this year, we were pleased to see that our Cell Gap project was their number-one priority. And the reason we're coming to you tonight is, just last week, Minister Lille and the provincial government came forward in the budget recently, and they have made an allocation for their share of the project, their third, which is $71 million. So the announcement was in Belleville last Monday, I believe. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about the financing and the structuring of this next project and how we got there. When we took that anecdotal evidence and the questions about coverage in the region, we hired an engineering firm that went out and did an analysis of the supply. Where is it covered in eastern Ontario, and where are the gaps? We modeled that out, and we had two economists work on that and figure out, how much would it cost to close those gaps? And our operating premise is, we're only looking at putting public dollars in if there's market failure. If the private sector companies can go and make a return on investment and invest their own money in the network, then we shouldn't be putting public money in. But we know that in rural and near-rural urban areas, outside of the core of the GTA, there's areas that they can't make enough return on their investment, and they're not going to close those gaps. And that's kind of the premise that we use for doing our design for the project. So when we did that market failure analysis, we identified a $213 million private-public partnership. We also hired two different economists, one from Trent University and one from Ryerson, to look at what kind of return you get on investments in public infrastructure. And they said that there could be up to 3,000 full-time job equivalents, and another $420 million in investment into the region from private sector companies. Once we put that infrastructure in, they can use that to make more investments going forward, and we think that that's really crucial. Also, as you mentioned, the Smart Cities Initiative, in order to deploy the Smart Cities technologies and deploy that strategy, you need to have infrastructure, you need to have connectivity. And there's layers of connectivity. There's fiber, there's broadband, and there's also mobile broadband through the cell project. So I think it's really important to differentiate, there's two different aspects of the project. One is coverage, and coverage is when you can't get any signal. There's no bars, and there are big gaps in eastern Ontario. There are some gaps just on the fringes of the city of Kingston, where you can't get a signal. I think it's Bath Road, where you drive down the hill, you drop the call, there's no signal there. Our project would fix those gaps by investing in infrastructure to put a tower there, so that you will get a signal. And that's a very large part of the project. It's about $165 million. But there's also a challenge around something that Gerard was talking about, which is capacity. So when there's too many people using the network at the same time, and you end up dropping your calls, or you can sustain a call, but you can't use data on your phone, that's a problem with capacity. And I'll give you a little example, in Kingston, I did my MBA at Queen's in 2010. If you go to the Donald Gordon Center, you can get one or two bars on the Bell network at Donald Gordon. If you get about 100 people in there, and they're bringing executives from all over the world to do executive training, if they all start using their cellphone at the break between classes, you can't get a signal. There's not enough capacity in the network to sustain that. If you go downstairs, you have absolutely no signal. So that's at one of the premier places in Kingston, where you're encouraging people to come, and it's a part of your economic development. So we have $35 million set aside to close those capacity gaps, and we do believe that a lot of that will be invested in transportation corridors and in the urban centers. When we go out to the market, it's a competitive process for bidding, so we don't tell them exactly where it has to go, and I want to really emphasize this, we get a lot of calls or questions. This is a conceptual design. We know where the holes are. We don't know exactly where the towers are going to go, until we go through the competitive process, and we receive the bids back from the vendors. So we do have a conceptual design and a conceptual costing, and we have a rough sense of how many new towers we would need to use. We always try to minimize new tower building by looking at places where we can collocate, that's what the COLO is short for, colocation. So if we can colocate on a tower, then we go with that first. How did we structure the project? It's a private-public partnership. EORN is a nonprofit, non-share capital corporation. We have, I report to a board of directors, along with my colleagues. And in this partnership, it's a one-third, one-third, one-third. So the Wardens Caucus and the Mayor's Caucus would put in $10 million. Canada would put in $71 million, and we're looking forward to Canada officially joining the project later this summer, early fall. Ontario's already committed their $71 million, and we would go out and expect to raise a minimum of $61 million from the private sector. Last time, we exceeded our target expectation from investment from the private sector. The Mayor's Caucus, the 10 separated cities, just to give you a bit of a sense of how we came up with the number for Kingston and all of the different members, we had four CAOs, two from the mayors and two from the wardens, develop a formula. 20% of the formula is based on the area, 40% is based on population, and 40% is based on weighted assessment. So of the $10 million that the Wardens Caucus and the Mayor's Caucus would contribute, the Mayor's Caucus would, the 10 separated cities, would put in 2.7 million, or about 28% of that. And this, in the report from staff, this is the number for Kingston, $954,782, and we're hoping that you will support that contribution over the next four years, and see a similar kind of return on investment into the community of Kingston in both coverage and capacity. And in terms of the timelines, we already have provincial approval. We're hoping for federal approval in the fall. We would start negotiating a contribution agreement with the province, and develop the RFPs, issue the RFPs, and we would hope to start building in late 2019 or early 2020. And it would likely be a three-to-four-year build over that time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Actually, when you mentioned Center, you're getting pretty close to my district. So my question has to do with towers, and has the technology for building towers changed and refined so that they aren't as intrusive, when you need to build something quite tall inside a city? Is there, is there a change in how you're doing it?
So currently, question, currently, going to need to be new cell towers to close the coverage gaps. But one of the new technologies that my colleagues and our engineers are looking at, you've probably heard about 5G. So 5G is the next generation of mobile coverage, and the way 5, we, the standards haven't been set, and we're, we're like you, trying to figure out how much of it is hype and what it's going to look like. But 5G will be more like, likely to be fiber-fed small cells that would be on telephone poles and buildings, and to increase the density of coverage and capacity in urban areas. So that is a new technology that'll be coming out, and that might minimize some of the overbuild, but we don't know what the timelines on that will be.
Just as a follow-up, so this, these contracts are let, the 5G might not be what you use, it may not be telephone poles, it may need to be towers? But you don't know yet, or?
We don't, we don't exact timing of when 5G to the market. Bell Canada is doing 20 sites in Ontario this year, maybe 200 next year. So as we go through that RFP process, we won't do the whole thing in one big RFP, and we will try to take advantage of new technologies as they come in, and as we go through that process.
Okay, next on my list is Counsel Neil.
Yes, I know when the proposal came, and this may be a question for our CAO, I'm not sure, but what was the salient argument in favor of us supporting this project before, was that there was clearly a value added specifically for the taxpayers of Kingston. Are we assured that we have the same kind of degree of value added?
So Counsel Neil, so during the briefing, you can only ask questions of the person who's at the podium. When the item comes up for discussion later on in the agenda, that is the time to ask questions from staff.
The CAO left the, left the podium too soon. My other question is, Prince Edward County, it'll be included in that improvement area that you're proposing? So next time I go wine touring, I won't get charged by a US carrier? Which keeps happening.
Well, if there's more capacity in the network, then you're much likely to stay on. But Prince Edward County is another great example in what But Prince Edward County is another great example in Wellington, where they get thousands and thousands of visitors on a Saturday or Sunday, not enough capacity in the network. When the hip concert was here in downtown, how many people did you have in the square? I guarantee half of those people probably didn't have a cell connection, and they could have been tweeting about your event and giving you free tourism marketing.
Thank you.
Councillor Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you, that was a very good comment about tourism. Yes, we do need that for that particular point. Going back to the technology again, isn't there ways to camouflage the technology? I was reading an article about possibilities of making the towers look like a tree or looking like a chimney stack or something to that effect. Do you know anything about that?
Those are the kind of questions we usually get more in Hastings and Halberne, but absolutely, there is a bit more cost to make them look like trees. And we can't do that for all of Eastern Ontario, but we think we'll probably have to entertain that in some areas, absolutely. I mean, we understand that some people don't want more towers. We get that. But we also know that for public safety and smart cities and all kinds of other reasons, people do want and need connectivity. So it's a kind of balancing act between them.
I get that. Thank you very much.
Councillor.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions, and they're sort of all connected, like, who owns these towers or this infrastructure? And is there any possibility that it will be connected, like, through an Internet of Things, and that the city could in any way collect any non-tax revenue from this?
I'm going to, two questions, great questions. So as a partnership, our model is that we use the public dollars to stimulate private investment. We own 51%, in the last project, we owned 51% of the assets in the network for seven years, and we use them as security to ensure that over the long term, the private sector companies will continue to invest more money into that infrastructure and the network. After seven years, we sell it back to them for a dollar. We don't own and operate the network, and we don't think we're, we don't want to be owners and operators of the network. We want to let the private sector own and operate it, but we sign service-level agreements with them to ensure that they continue to invest in it over time going forward. It's not like a road or a bridge where you build it once and it lasts for 50 years and you pave it every year. You need ongoing investments into the network over time, and that's where the service-level agreements come in. The second question on Internet of Things, and our, our model is not about us owning it or generating revenue off it. We think that the private sector does a good job of that, but I do think that everything that's going to happen in Internet of Things and in your smart cities, that will have to connect to some kind of a network. And the mobile network will be one of the choices. I think you also developed a partnership with Bell Canada around some smart cities things, and that will definitely enhance the opportunities available to you through that partnership.
Okay, so you know other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so moving on in our agenda, next, are there any petitions to present? Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, through you. I'm from the residence of Brayside Crescent. For those of you who don't know where it is, it's actually near the Lion Civic Garden, near the Cataract Way Mall. The purpose and reason for the petition is to request removal of significant and thinning out of thorn bushes behind the houses in the east, west, and south sides of Brayside Crescent. The reason is to eliminate and better control areas of brush that are currently a haven for use by large groups of predominantly young people as a clubhouse-type resource. This type of usage has resulted in accumulation of large amounts of waste materials, garbage, cans, papers, wrappers, empty cigarette packages, et cetera. As a result, the mess has created reduced significantly enjoyment of the area in question, especially the Lion Civic Garden for a large cross-section of citizens, including the undersigned. And I have about five pages of signatures.
Okay, thank you very much. So you know other petitions? We do have two motions of condolence. First motion, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the families and friends of those who were killed in last week's attack in Toronto. Our thoughts and prayers are with all Torontonians during this time. As a community, we stand with the city of Toronto and offer our full support in the aftermath of this terrible tragedy. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland, that the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to family and friends of retired Colonel Jerry Cody, who passed away Tuesday, April 24, 2018. Colonel Cody had an extensive military career before retiring in Kingston in 1996. He was widely known and well-respected in the Kingston community for his volunteerism and philanthropy. Colonel Cody will be dearly missed by all that knew him. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. We have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First up is report number 45 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor McLaren, the report number 45 from the chief administrative officer can be received and adopted.
So there are nine items. We have separated number three, is that correct, for councillor Cannon's, is that correct? And nine, so we separated three and nine. Are there any other separations? Councillor George?
Number five, please.
Councillor Holland?
Four, please.
Okay, any other separations? Okay, so we, first we will call the vote on the remaining items. So the items that have not been separated, so clause one is the various speed limit changes. Clause two, universal transit pass agreement on the modern society of Queen's University. Clause six, award of contract, supply, and operate a Kingston community bike-sharing program. Clause seven, request for extension of noise exemption, Queen's University Richardson Stadium. Clause eight, 2018 budget update, agency and board requests. And that carries. Okay, clause three, award of contract, housing first rapid rehousing program delivery to individuals who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you. Just a question on, it's, the report makes it pretty clear as to why Addictions and Mental Health Services didn't put, put forward a, an application for this, though I'm, and that there's a transitional, I'm just curious about, there's reference to case management and the housing, I guess homelessness prevention, aspects of this program, and I'm curious about whether the, what that'll look like, what the addictions counselling component of homeless, homelessness prevention might be in this current arrangement, if that makes any sense.
Mr. Leyman.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There is, needs to be clarified, first of all, that Addictions and Mental Health was not providing a mental health service for the homeless services, they were providing case management. So the service they were providing is the same service that home-based housing had been providing, and now will be providing in an extended aspect for the whole program. However, I think there's a recognition on behalf of all the service managers that it is unfortunate that they're not part of the homeless system any longer, and that we need to be conscious about how people are being referred to Addictions and Mental Health now that there's not that connection. So I don't believe there's a good answer for that, other than we've made the overture to Addictions and Mental Health to try to remain part of the system in some way, and we've asked them to propose something so that there is a better liaison situation between our homeless services and Addictions and Mental Health Services.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I just want to build maybe on the last point that Director Sheldon Layman mentioned. We recognize the importance of keeping them involved in the overall system, and that's what we're going to keep working with them to make sure that they remain connected and remain involved as an agency that can provide support services.
Councillor Sandic.
Thank you, your worship. I fully support extending the fits to the working low-income residents of Kingston. I've long heard.
So councillor Sandic, this is, that's item four. So we're on clause three right now. I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you on clause three. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak first at clause three? Sorry to cut you off, I'll come right back to you. Okay, so we'll call the vote first on clause three. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, now we have clause four, extended health benefits program. Councillor Sandic.
It was councillor Holland who separated it, but I can kick-start it. So I do support this, and I've long heard that Ontario Works, that some people on Ontario Works stay on Ontario Works so that they can keep their health benefits. So what my question is, is that we reviewed Ottawa, Toronto, Hamilton, London, and St. Thomas, are those the cities that, like, are those the only cities that offer it, or do we think that there's other cities too that offer it that we just didn't review? And I'm happy that Kingston is going to be one of those cities.
Who would like to answer that? Mr. Leyman?
Through you, your worship. It's not a common practice to offer this type of service, and those were the only service managers that we could find in our research that have similar programs.
I support it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I have a question about the, so the amount that's being funded from the Social Services Ontario Works allowance, allowances and benefits stabilization reserve, is that the same as, so there is currently, like, discretionary health spending in the Ontario Works budget, is that the same, or is this a different program?
Mr. Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a different reserve fund that was set, actually, that was set up by the city over the years, and the reason for that is because, if you recall, until, actually, I think until this year, the city was responsible for a portion of the Ontario Works payment, and not knowing what, what the numbers could be from year to year in terms of cycles, this particular reserve fund was set aside to be able to, or to enable the city to be able to address years where we may have higher numbers in terms of Ontario Works clients and therefore higher expenses. But because this has now been uploaded by the province, the need for this fund obviously is no longer there in terms of addressing the changes in terms of client numbers from year to year, and that's why we're proposing to utilize it differently and to be able to, to use these funds to benefit individuals that are working low-income.
And then, just another question, so discuss the, changing the age-based transit discounts. There was discussion about directing, redirecting those funds into this type of program. Will it be this reserve fund then, and what will the, do we need to have the numbers yet on what that might be?
Through you, so council might recall that that information, additional information in terms of numbers for age-based discount will be coming back in 2019. So we do not have the numbers yet, but we anticipate that for this particular program, because it's a pilot, we anticipate that over time, there may be a growing need or a growing interest in terms of support from the community, and we might be looking at more funding over time. So this is where additional funds from the age-based program could be redirected to this program.
So that's all, it's great, good to know that it could possibly grow, and certainly, the areas that we're talking about, providing services for, a lot of it, in terms of dental care and prescription eye services, are preventative measures, preventative health initiatives that I think will go a long way, not only to improving the health of the population of Kingston and the health equity, but also just in general, sort of reducing our overall need as a tax base to contribute to health services down the road at another level of government, regardless. I think it's, it's an important move, and it's a, it's a, there is so much about it that I think enhances the dignity of a large portion of the population who currently aren't being served and who require these types of health interventions essentially to, not only to live a happy, prosperous life, but to do things that we would like to see people do, like go into work or make sure that they're, that the children, that families aren't overly burdened by the costs of health services. So I'm very supportive of this, and thanks staff for bringing it forward.
Thank you. The vote on clause four. And that carries. Clause five, delegated authority for property acquisition, third crossing. Councillor George.
Thank you, your worship, and through, I think it's, it's a recommendation that I'm certainly going to support, but I do want to speak a little bit to it and ask some questions of staff that I think will assist in some clearer understanding for the current landowners that are going to be involved in this. And I want to thank staff for sending around the memo earlier today to clarify some of the questions that a number of us had and following the report that was provided to us. And I'm just wondering, given the delegation's concerns that were expressed to us this evening, is it possible, and I'm not, I totally agree with staff, it is not proper to talk negotiations or anything of that sort in any public forum, but is it possible at this stage that, at a minimum, those, those owners that are directly affected by the project, that a get-together could be held with at least the most up-to-date drawings that engineering and transportation may have available, so that everyone that is going to be affected is clear, very clear on the, the effect it will have on the property they currently have ownership of, and that staff, because I learned, I think, a little bit more from your memo today, could take the time to explain the exact process, because I don't think it's all about expropriation. What I'm reading here is that it's a negotiation process, and that, for example, there wouldn't necessarily just be one appraisal provided by the city that the property owner could in fact order an appraisal as well. The city would actually cover the cost of that appraisal, and negotiations would take place, given that there are two appraisals, one provided by the city's appraiser, whoever that may be, and one provided by the property owner. So I did read that correctly, and for clarity.
Mr. Huguenbos. Thank you, through you, your, regarding your first question about information, absolutely, staff's initiative is to reach out to all affected property owners and provide as much information as possible from the very first meeting. We've been successful in being able to meet with a number of the property owners today and have meetings set up with, with others. The, the goal of those meetings is to explain everything about the process, including the previous EA and the public process, which we encouraged all the affected property owners to, to attend, and they had the opportunity to speak to the project team at that time. The information with respect to the actual property requirements was identified during that EA process. So the city knows what it needs to acquire, and we want to have those meetings individually with the property owners to show the impact, whether it's a partial taking of property or a full buyout of that property that was identified through that public EA process. So having a group meeting on that, I don't think is the best approach at this time, at this stage of the process, in order to, to get down into the negotiation stage with the property owners. From the second part of your question about the process, the city's policy on acquisition actually speaks to the fact that the city should approach acquisition of properties for public infrastructure projects as if we were expropriating, because the Expropriations Act has a number of entitlements and compensation measures for the affected property owner. So regardless if we expropriate or not, or have that need, when we come knocking on someone's door to buy their property for, for a public project, we take into account the detailed process that is in the provincial guideline or act, which is the Expropriations Act, which municipalities have to follow in order to acquire the property. That includes when we deliver an offer. That includes, when we deliver an offer, we must deliver that offer with an appraisal that's cited in the Expropriations Act, and that's a part of our city council-approved policy on acquisition. We also encourage property owners, if they so desire, to pursue an appraisal and know that the city will cover that cost as part of the acquisition. The key point in the Expropriations Act for private property owners is that they have a full recovery of all reasonable costs that they would incur due to the acquisition by the public authority, which in this case is the city. So that is, that is the goal of the process.
Commissioner Hurdle.
So, thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to add to that, that I know there are a lot of conversations about expropriation, and that's a word that scares a lot of people. And I can appreciate that. Our first step is not ever expropriation. Our first step is obviously to get the appraisal, and as Mr. Huguenbos indicated, to encourage a property owner to also obtain an appraisal, which the city covers a cost. From there, we do have conversations and negotiations with the property owner, looking at information from these two appraisals, because ultimately, that's what we want to be able to achieve is really a successful negotiation. It is much easier and actually a lot cheaper for the city to be able to achieve a successful negotiation. And to give you an example, when we went through the John Counter Boulevard project, the city was successful in over 30 negotiations, except for one where we had to move into expropriation. So that gives you a sense of how we do want to work with property owners. The other, I think, to your other question about having a meeting with property owners to look at the plans and so on, I think that's something we would be open to doing, and definitely, we don't yet have all the information in terms of road access, but that's something we would want to do with the public, yes.
All right. So what I'm gathering then, from what you've said, just so I've got it clear in my thick head, that even though we are complying under the Expropriation Act, it doesn't mean that we're going to expropriate. It's just a tool in which gets you to a point of negotiation, and through the negotiation process, if all else fails, then you're in that position to expropriate because you have followed those steps.
Mr. Huguenbos.
That is correct. That is how we ideally want to handle any acquisition for a project. In this report, we're recommending a more accelerated approach to that. So we want to negotiate with the property owners, and we have initiated several of those already. But in parallel to that process, because of the timelines and because of the funding and the timing for commencement of construction, expropriation can take up to 12 months to complete, and expropriation is the only tool that guarantees the city to acquire those properties. And the project cannot go on without those properties that were identified in the preliminary design through the EA. So to run that parallel process, it's not uncommon in the province of Ontario. It's not unfair of a process. We can continue to negotiate, but there are mandatory requirements, strict regulations in the act that the city must follow, and if we don't get that started this summer, then I, staff cannot guarantee that the properties will be available to the project for the start of construction.
Okay. So I think just for peace of mind, I hope for the current property owners, it sounds like you are willing to approach the idea of having a get-together to simply review at least where we're at at this point with the needs in order to, which were identified in the EA, in order to begin a negotiation process. And the fact that it wouldn't just be one single appraisal come from the city, that the option is there for them as well, paid by the city, so that at least there's, there's two values there to negotiate with, I think, I think that's quite fair, actually, but that sounds reasonable to me. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor Neil.
Thank you. A couple of questions very quickly, and I want to thank various staff that I reached out to with some questions before. First of all, it sounds to me very much like it's expropriation if necessary, but that's a kind of last resort, that our staff will enter into a negotiation process with an opportunity to have a couple of assessments done? And so it's only expropriation as a last resort? Is that accurate?
Mr. Huguenbos.
Expropriation is a last resort. We want to negotiate and settle deals cooperatively with the property owners, and I should mention that's based on the appraisals that you mentioned. And the appraisal is not simply as the property sits today. The appraisal has to take into its current use, its future potential highest and best use of a highest development model for the property, as well as tenants that are in, or whether it's an investment property. So all those are taken into account in the appraisals for the property.
And there was some option by the delegation earlier about a public meeting to discuss, it sounded to me like to discuss the whole kind of potential compensation. In my almost 14 years on council, acquisition and disposition of property has always been an in-camera issue for apparent reasons. Is that something that we would even consider or be able to do?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, we would, from a staff perspective, we would never recommend that any kind of discussions around a property value be discussed in a group session or a public meeting. You're absolutely correct, councillor Neil, that that's something typically that's discussed in closed session, or we've had, obviously, negotiations that have happened through staff, et cetera. I think what the delegation mentioned, then we could definitely look at accommodating, and maybe the deputy commissioner, Van Buren, might want to comment on that, is a public meeting to look at where the project is at and looking at some of the future next steps overall for the project, and having a better understanding of when the construction may start and the road access implications. I know we don't have that worked out in details yet, but that's something that I think he may want to comment on.
Mr. Van Buren.
Through you, your worship. Certainly, and the whole concept of ongoing communication and public engagement is going to be absolutely critical as we start to go through this next phase of the project. We're going to deliver that communication, that public engagement in a variety of different formats. Later in June, we'll have an updated project website where the general public and other stakeholders will be able to get more up-to-date information related to the project. Project team is also, has gotten started on starting to reach out to some of what we're calling near neighbors. So those are going to be landowners, businesses that are going to be directly affected by the final design and the construction phase for the project. So again, there is an opportunity that we can, we can provide more information as we start to sort through all of the final design elements, and certainly help those individuals and businesses get a better appreciation for some of the things that they're going to have to encounter through the construction phase, and how we can work with them to try to mitigate for some of those impacts.
Thank you. Things struck me. The idea of having a couple of councillors on a committee, I think that's wrought with some peril. The, if it's anything to do with acquisition or disposition of property, I think that puts, that should be a collective decision of council, and it puts individuals, in my mind, in some jeopardy. If the context of that was within the idea of a public meeting, the whole idea of a public meeting, I would think, is for the public to have the most say in that and not just a couple of councillors. I'm a little confused by that recommendation. Can you speak to that?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I don't know what committee that was being referred to. We don't have an acquisition committee. You're absolutely right, councillor Neil, that typically, when we deal with acquisition or disposition, it either goes through council as a whole, or council delegates the authority to staff, which council has done on a number of different occasions, dealing with employment lands, for example. So we don't have these specific committees where they're in charge of acquisition. So I would not recommend that. I think that if decisions have to be made and involve councillors, I think that all of council should be involved.
Thank you. And lastly, and I know this will disappoint some people that I haven't disappointed in the past, but I was one of five councillors who voted against the third crossing, but on that night, there was a clear eight to five vote. I am not going to be an obstructionist to the construction of the bridge because there was a clear vote taken that evening. Having said that, I'll reserve the right to say I told you so if there's cost overruns, or if the city in future has to say no to some desirable infrastructure projects, such as parks, because of our commitment for this. I also reserve the right to say I told you so if the federal government abandons the causeway after we've built the third crossing. So there is some peril to the decision that was made that night. But having said that, there was a clear vote by council that night, and I think it behooves us not to get involved in a kind of rear action obstructionism by deferring things that have already, that are necessary for that. So, so I apologize for those that I worked with in the past on getting a no vote. So, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. Question is just about being of the information. So based on the answers to councillor Neil and councillor George, deputy commissioner Van Buren, so it sounds like some general information could go to the eight affected property owners, as well as maybe the townhouses that have their entrance right off the counter street west of the bridge, about, you know, maybe some traffic patterns, road closures, what to expect by the end of June? And then the negotiations, you know, settlement negotiations will then start up one-on-one privately during the summer and into the fall. So would that be the timing, so that at least the business owners can have some general information before it gets into the specific negotiations privately?
Mr. Van Buren.
So, yes. The project team has already started to reach out to a number of those near neighbors. So we've already had a meeting with representatives from the River Park Development. We've met with one of the landowners on the, on the west, or sorry, on the east shore of the Gatterock River. So we are, we're working slowly towards establishing that contact with each of those near neighbors. And again, our discussions with them are really to make introductions so that they can understand who they can reach out through the course of the design and the construction work, and start to give them a little bit of a sense in terms of what are some of the things that we're going to have to talk about and discuss, and find ways to mitigate as we kind of get through that whole phase of the project. So from a timing perspective, we're working on that right now. Our intent would be to try to finish those discussions as soon as we can.
councillor Cannon.
Through you councillor Neil, and councillor George actually asked all my questions, but I just wanted to say that I reserve the right to say I told you so if the bridge is a huge success story.
Councillor Cannon, well, well played, well played. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. As councillor Neil said earlier, after a long and thorough debate in the community and around this table, we made a clear decision to move forward on this infrastructure project. And now that all of the funding from the province and the federal government is in place, now the number one concern is to ensure that this bridge comes in on time and on budget. This recommendation that is before us tonight is one of those pieces aimed at ensuring it comes in on time and on budget. And we know that when we discuss this project around this table, that one of the biggest risks to cost was time, that the longer this project is delayed, the higher the cost is going to be. So that's why the timing is so critical. So the way that I read this, and I think that councillor George said it well, this is not a matter of ramming this through or railroading any property owner. This is simply a matter of ensuring the timelines that we have committed to for this much-needed project, the same time leaving the door open for fair, open negotiation discussions to ensure that everybody wins. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Next on my list is councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. It seemed to me in talking to people since the weekend about this, like a number of my colleagues, that people thought this was much more imminent and being rushed through than it's actually going to happen. So I was wondering if staff could speak a bit about the preliminary steps that are necessary before you're really able to really start negotiating with people? I'm thinking of, the one that struck me, which was so obvious, was surveys, surveys of all different properties and making sure everybody's agreed that this is what's being bought and sold. If there's things of that sort, then I think staff, this is a good time for staff to let us know what they are.
Mr. Huguenbos.
Yes, so to start negotiations, like formal negotiations, like I said, an offer has to be made, and an offer has to include an appraisal. So appraisals take time. We've, we have received some. We also need to have the property defined by legal survey. In some instances, that is already done in a full buyout situation of a property, but when we're into partial takings of property and widenings, those surveys need to be completed or amended from what they are. And these things take time. We need people's availability. We're coming knocking on their door, so we ask for their welcome and their time. So in order to get to that stage, it can take weeks and months, which we've, we've got about a two-month start so far since the federal announcement. And in order to expropriate, like I mentioned before, it's a very strict process. So to do that, we have to have the right survey plans, the right notices to the property owner, the right bylaws on council agendas and approve. So none of that is happening tonight. It all has to be done, and it is not an overnight process to undertake all those steps.
Thank you. I'll repeat that expropriation is a last resort. Also, and I think Mr. Van Buren may have been said to have answered this, but just to be sure, because this is taking place in the northeast corner of my district, that we talk about the eight landowners, but there are businesses, tenants, business tenants of these landlords, or some of them at least. And my understanding is that we will be in touch with them. We just haven't got to that stage yet, and I'd like confirmation of that, and that they have some protections or allowances under the Expropriation Act as well. Those two elements, whichever, whoever wants to answer this.
Mr. Huguenbos.
Yes, so we definitely want to speak to tenants. We do always want to speak to the property owner first to initialize that discussion. So we look forward to doing that with Mr. Martin, and then moving on to his tenants and having those discussions, absolutely. The other part of your question is, yes, when the municipality or the public authority is, has the opportunity to expropriate land from a property, the tenants also do have rights under the Expropriation Act for damages and business loss claims where they can substantiate them. I'm not going to get into those details, and I don't want to give them advice. They need independent advice, but that is possible.
Right. I just also am saying there that they would have to contact their own legal advisors on something like that. I just thought it was important to let them know they are being considered in the process because I'm getting the message that they're sort of at sea at this. because I'm getting the message that they're sort of at sea at this rate at the moment, not contacted, not knowing what's going to happen. As mr. Van Buren pointed out, that is going to happen. So did you want to say something further?
Mr. Van Buren?
Those discussions with businesses that would be impacted by the project would very likely look no different than how we would approach our discussions with merchants on Prince Street as part of our big dig project. So they may be tenants that are not building owners, but we treat them as though they're being impacted by the work. So it can be very important to us to make sure that they're going to be well advised as we work through the whole process here.
Thank you. An example of Prince Dig myself, which I think has gone quite successfully, not without difficulty, but certainly successfully. I don't know if I have another question. The, I was just wondering, oh, it wasn't clear to me from what mr. Van Buren said earlier, do you have an approximate time within, well, you could decide when the construction of the bridge will start and when it will end? Because people are asking this, of course, because it's lead-up time for businesses and residents who live nearby and so on.
Mr. Van Buren?
At this time, we were forecasting the construction for the project to commence in mid to late 2019. And as had been indicated through the preliminary design, the build period is approximately three years. So we forecast that the project will conclude at the end of year 2022.
Thank you. I appreciate. Now, we've expressed some concern about the bids are coming in, apparently, this is the way it was put to me, the bids are coming in Wednesday, I believe. And my understanding is those bids are not bids as we normally understand them. And I was wondering if you could explain that to the public.
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, your worship. Councillor may recall that as part of the business plan development for the project, part of it was a procurement options analysis where we looked at different project delivery methods. We had looked at a range of different options, including traditional models like design bid build, design build, some other forms of project delivery like P3s, public-private partnership. And our consideration that was reflected in our recommendations was to actually pursue what is referred to as an integrated project delivery model. That model is actually a multi-party agreement that would involve the city, the design consultant and the contractor. And the idea is that that team works together in a highly collaborative way to deliver the project within a defined project budget. So in this case, the $180 million project budget that we have. So at this point tomorrow, when we close the requests for proposals and we see the proposals that we receive, the first stage is basically a qualification-based selection process. We're looking for teams that can exhibit the necessary skills and experience that's going to be required to deliver a project of this nature. It's only until we get into the second stage of the RFP, which is going to be later this summer, that we're going to start to draw some of the financial details related to those particular proposals.
Thank you. So even though you mentioned the budget and so on, if, we haven't got to the tender stage yet, we're looking at logistics and process and that's what Wednesday is about.
So councillor Hutchison? So giving you a little leeway as it's timing around this item, because this is respect to property acquisition. So we can only go so far down this track before we're on a different issue. So unless you want to reframe about timing or specifically about the property acquisition item that's before us, we can't necessarily talk about the entire process over the next years. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so I'll let that, I didn't mean to do that, it's just in response to questions you get.
I understand.
I'm just trying to get it out there, what apparently we know or will know soon, so the public can have some feeling about how this is going to roll out. That's my main concern.
I understand. So you can ask a quick, so I'm not saying you can't ask about that, but just.
Well, I'll ask a question, which is related to something we've been asked about, and then you can rule.
That's fine.
And I'll accept whatever you say. So my question was, if tenders, which would be in the summer, indicate a construction price which is excessive of the estimates previously estimated or received by council, can this process, the development process, be paused for reexamination?
Mr. Van Buren?
I'm going to start with an offering that, one of the things that we want to do through our communication work is to offer some more public education as it relates to the whole IPD procurement model that we're using here, so we can help the public understand more about how we're procuring this particular project. As I had mentioned earlier, the basis of this procurement is looking for an IPD, an Integrated Project Delivery Team, that is going to be able to work and deliver this project within the project budget, which is the $180 million budget that's being established for the project. In response to your more specific question about, is there a scenario in which the cost can come higher? Technically, there is, but I would offer that that has been mitigated to a large extent through all the work that we have done through the course of developing the EA, the preliminary design and the business plan, which at this point in time, we have a very robust Class B construction cost estimate. So I would offer that we are confident that the project is going to be delivered within that budget envelope that's been established.
Appreciate the answer.
councillor Bowles?
Your worship and through you, I just want to thank the delegation for their questions. I think we've all learned a little bit tonight. And also thanks staff, because it seems like we've got a little bit of a plan to sort of work through those and deal with some of those concerns. So basically, just some comments, since this whole thing kind of hit the agenda, my phone has lit up with people basically in favour of the Third Crossing and being concerned again that there might be another unforeseeable delay and comments like, we've already waited 50 years. So with that in mind, you know, even beyond the will of council with this, it's definitely the will of a majority of Kingstonians. So I think it's important that we basically continue on with this. And this is more just giving staff the ability to go out and have those negotiations. It's been mentioned time and time again, expropriation is simply a last resort and it should be considered a last resort. And it's just that guarantee so that we can actually sign those contracts and get this actually built. So again, I hope everybody supports this. It's something that needs to happen, it's going to happen. And also something the delegation mentioned was that he wasn't against the Third Crossing, he just had some concerns. So hopefully through this debate and everything, we've allayed those concerns and we'll have a good process moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. McLaren?
Thank you. Regards to the delegation, two points that he suggested for dealing fairly, just to see if they're covered here. He mentioned that recovery of all reasonable fees, does that include legal fees for independent council?
Mr. Yegum? Yes.
And secondly, he mentioned that he would like the possibility of trading land and not using cash. Is that also a possibility during the negotiations?
Yes, we look forward to meeting with mr. Martin and understanding his concerns and exploring all opportunities for a negotiated settlement.
Thank you. councillor Turner?
Through you, a quick question about property acquisition and rollover tax. I had a question over the weekend about capital gains tax, and I Googled it because I was interested in how this would work. And what I came up with was a rollover tax. So if you move the property and it's your property that you would gain tax on, it would be turned into a rollover tax and you would have two years approximately until you could buy something else in replacement of it, or you would have to pay the tax, or you would do something. I think you had some information on it.
Mr. Yegum, boss?
Yes, if the property owner is subject to capital gains based on the value that the city compensates the owner for the property through a taking for a public infrastructure project, then there is the option to replace that property and defer the capital gains onto that property so that there isn't a tax hit in that year or subsequent years. The, in the two-year window that you mentioned, the owner needs to seek the financial tax advice necessary to do that. There are rules with that with the Income Tax Act, but yes, that is possible.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, we will call the vote on clause five. And that carries. Okay, moving on to clause number nine, fourth quarter operating budget report for 2017. So we've separated, so we've separated the paragraph. So first, we will take the vote on paragraphs one and two. And that carries. So now we will call the vote on the balance of clause number nine, paragraph three. And that carries. Okay, moving on to report number 46 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor Ossanik, that report number 46 from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So there are two clauses. The first is naming rights agreement from Leon Centre. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause two, Eastern Ontario cell gap and capacity expansion project. councillor Neil?
Thank you. I will redirection from earlier to the CAO. I know the compelling argument, the first time we entered into this agreement, was that there was recognisable value added for Kingstonians. I know that the art, and it could be a compelling argument, that when I drive to Prince Edward County, or if I drive up to Bancroft, there are pockets that will know that now I can't get sell, but I would in future. But for the immediate area, is there, can you suggest there'll be clear value added for the community's investment?
Cao Hunt?
Through you, I'm going to ask Craig Dejar to add to my comments if he chooses. But to give you an idea, the city by itself could not begin to close some of the gaps here right in the city. I think the way we need to look at this is that as more and more users get onto a network, the capacity of that network becomes more minimal. And as a result of that, more and more people are going to experience gaps in service or dropped calls. So when you start thinking about the future, where you have electronics in your home that start to need to feed information back to you to tell you whether or not, you know, they're running properly, or you're going to get, you know, be able to use the future of technology, we can call some of that the internet of things, if you will, there's going to have to be capacity. If there isn't capacity, then the whole region is not going to be able to benefit. If we talk about autonomous vehicles as an example, when autonomous vehicles start to become the norm, or when shipments come from warehouses in Eastern Ontario and go through the corridor of the 401, and there are label, electronic labels on those particular shipments that basically track that shipment from where it is in the warehouse to where it's going. If there are sections along the 401, which is the main corridor, that can't receive and keep that information, you're going to have lost information. So this really becomes a backbone to the economy of the future. But in the short term, there's definitely payback as a result of that capacity expansion and the cell gaps. And in fact, I just spoke with David before he left, mr. Fell, and he's very interested in working and using the towers that are already here and in existence in Kingston. He wasn't aware of some of the ones that we have at this stage, and he wasn't aware of some of the ones the utilities Kingston have on the peripheral. And as a result of that, he made a commitment tonight that they'd certainly look at that as a way to make sure that we don't, that we optimise the number of towers that we have already in existence. But Craig, do you want to add to that?
Through your worship, through the councillor. Preliminary estimates that I've seen show that we can leverage almost $15 million with the investment of $954,000 by the city of Kingston. So there's certainly significant ROI that will come from the federal and provincial contribution in the private sector. So the investment we make, or that you direct to make tonight, will leverage significant resources.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I do recognise you.
Thank you. I think that the only thing I'm going to say to this is that in the 21st century, this infrastructure is just as important as sewer pipes and water pipes. Communication infrastructure ensures that we are on the cutting edges of community. And I was in a meeting with other mayors across Eastern Ontario, probably about a month ago, when we were talking about this project. And what was very clear to us was the cost of not doing this is that Eastern Ontario would be left behind. But if we move on this, we have an opportunity as a region and as a city to be on the cutting edge. And that's critical if we want to look at attracting new businesses, new technologies, everything to do with our smart city and innovation agenda, this sort of communication infrastructure is critical for us. So I absolutely encourage council to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I return the chair.
Thank you. If nobody else wishes to speak, we will call the vote on clause two. And that carries. Okay, moving on to report number 47 from Planning Committee.
It's my, submit report number 47 from the Planning Committee duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Turner, that report number 47 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 143 Beverley Street. We will call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 48 from Heritage Kingston.
Governor Patterson, it's my pleasure to present report number 48 from Heritage Kingston for council's consideration. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Shaw, seconded by councillor Ossanik, that report number 48 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So there are, of course, the two clauses for both statutory and non-statutory consultation. If there are no separations, we will vote on the report as a whole. Call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 49 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to present report number 49 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Moved by councillor Holland, excuse me, deputy mayor Holland, and seconded by councillor Cannon, that report number 49 from the Administrative Policies Cannon, that report number 49 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There are just the two clauses. Clause one, tax write-offs pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001. And clause two, 2018 tax ratios and tax capping parameters. We'll call the vote, please.
One more vote, please.
And that carries. Okay, nothing from Committee of the Whole, information reports. If you have a question, just raise your hand. Number one, 2018 Priority Status Matrix Q1 Update. Clause, or Report Two, Report on Agreements Executed Under Delegated Approval and Signing Authority, January 1st, 2018 to March 31st, 2018. Number three, North Kingston Secondary Plan Project, oh, I'm sorry. Councillor standing is that for number two or number three? Number three? Okay, North Kingston Secondary Plan Project Update.
Thank you, my worship. My question for, about the North Kingston Secondary Plan is specifically the transportation plan that's in it. So do we know what month or year we might see those alternatives? If there isn't going to be the Wellington Street extension, the report says they're looking at alternative routes and it doesn't look like it would be this term at council. Do we know when that might come back to council?
The second.
Thank you. And through you, so that work is being advanced, it is quite technical in nature and takes a period of time. I'm meeting with the consultants next week. We're walking and doing the land use plan first and, and looking at making sure that we understand specifically the land use plan so then the transportation can feed into it. So it is, it is still going to take a period of time. I don't have an exact date, but I can provide that to you following the meeting.
We have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have a couple of motions first, that as requested by KFLNA, Public Health, council proclaimed March 11th, 2018, is that March 11th? Is that correct? Okay. March 11th, 2018, is 50 years of KFLNA Public Health Day in the City of Kingston. Can I have a mover, please? We're, we're a couple of months late, but that's okay. Moved by councillor Schell, seconded by councillor Turner. And that carries. Number two, that the resignation of Taryn Chambers from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee and the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee Built Environment Working Group be received with regret. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Bow. And that carries. And number three, that notwithstanding section 3.1.4 subsection 5 of the Illumination of City Facilities Policy, Kingston City Council approved the illumination of City Hall in Springer Market Square on May 11th, 2018 for the Shine Green Campaign in recognition of Ontario Mental Health Awareness Week. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by deputy mayor Holland, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. And that carries. Okay, we have no new motions tonight. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing on Mr. Clerk Ross for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor Bow, seconded by councillor Cannon, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2018-12, held Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, be confirmed.
And that carries. Okay, we have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk Ross for bylaws, please.
Moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor Turner, that bylaws one through three and five through seven be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor Turner, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw six three readings. One more to vote, please.
That carries.
Moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor Turner, that bylaws four through seven be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Bow. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.